Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 1st, 2016 Board of Select.
January 4th.
Oh, God, already a mistake. First, second. We've been in executive session and we're now out in open session. We wish everyone a happy new year. To be blunt, I think the Board of Select really enjoyed a week off along the way. And now we're anxious to get back to work. So, having made those notes, remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public document. We welcome Area 58. We welcome the print press as well. I think we'll dispense with the recitation of our ground rules and we'll go right to a couple moments of silence to be used in any way. Okay, so again, welcome everyone to the January 4th, 2016 meeting. So the agenda's been published. Are there any additional items that anyone would like considered? So we're going to jump right into the community compact proposal and a contract to be signed.
And I emailed that to you, so hopefully it's in your packet here.
Yes. And I am, have, I mean, read it over again and I'm all the more excited about the stuff that we're getting. And I think we've already voted on it, so I simply sign it. And, so who's paying for it?
The state is paying for this. This is a program from Governor Baker and the Lieutenant Governor. And I have an email about the process here. Let me see if I can find it.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're going to get 75%, I believe, right away. And then we'll get 25% after that. I already sent them in this contract. So the state is working on getting the payment to us to cover it. But let me just see if I can find that.
And that was my only concern, because the contract does read, "The town agrees to pay UMass Boston all-inclusive fee of $45,000."
Right.
And obviously, we'd much prefer to have that money from the state before we...
Absolutely.
Determine whether or not they expect the town to pay in advance, because that's where we got the double hook on the Green Communities grant. And it's in that contract where it... Can I see that? Is that the standard state contract? Just, I wanted to see, I can...
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's about the fourth item down.
No. Now, this isn't the standard one that they... It's pretty soon. Yeah. I mean, that would be the only thing. Because if it is, you know, you've got to appropriate the money to pay it in advance before they'll reimburse you for it. And I don't know that that's the case with this one. I don't think so. That's different.
I don't think it is either.
I think we wouldn't have a cash flow issue. I understand your issue.
Yeah.
This is another one of those things that it's too good to pass up. And I think we can...
Community Compact next steps. There we go. Okay, this is from Pam Coper. Says, "Congratulations on entering into Community Compact with the Baker-Polito administration. We're excited to partner with Plumpton as you implement your chosen best practices." This has the $45,000. "The grants will be paid to the town in two installments. 75% of the total upon execution of the state grant contract." So that is just them signing it when they get it to us. "25% of the total upon completion of the project and upon submission to the DLS of a report certifying completion of the projects and identifying how the financial policies, capital plan, and financial forecast are being used." As opposed to just sitting on a shelf somewhere. She has entrances. Okay. So she has the contract and she's doing what she needs to do to get the money to us. And it's going to show up, I believe, on the cherry sheet, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. The money will be on the cherry sheet. The contract will then be signed by the state and a payment of 75% of the grant amount will be made to your account.
Okay.
So I think that must be the cherry sheet. Okay.
So it's coming in the form of state aid?
It's coming in the form of state aid.
Okay. So this is the professional sum agreement. I think we've voted on this, but just to confirm, I'm going to go ahead and sign this?
Yes.
All right.
Very excited. Very excited. This is going to be a lot of work. I know it's going to be a lot of work for Christine, a lot of work.
For the Finance Committee and the officials here, Treasurer Collector.
And probably for all of us. But so well worthwhile. Okay.
Perfect. Yeah, we'll make a copy of Bree and then, do you want to just put the date on there? And we'll get it back to...
You want today's date?
Yeah, we'll put today's date. And then we will send a copy to Pam. And I'll give you her email address. Actually, you may have it, because I think she copied you in on that. And then the woman from the Collins group. You may not have her address, so I'll get that to you.
Okay. Anything else on Community Compact? Beautiful. So, by the way, we have at 6:30 an appointment with Jeff Randall about an agricultural venture. And so we'll do other stuff until then. So our town personnel policy and procedure documents. Two follow-ups. We were awaiting comments, I believe, on the disciplinary guidelines. Did you hear from anyone?
Nope.
Very good. So that becomes policy. And we were waiting for comments on the social media policy. Anything?
Nope.
That becomes policy. And then we were going to consider a handbook introduction. And Dale did send us some things for the beginning of that. The Personnel Officer, the Personnel Records, nondiscrimination. Did you get those?
I don't remember getting it.
Did you?
I got it. I don't remember reading it, though.
Okay. Maybe we'll have to hold off on this one week.
Can we hold that?
My only question, Dale, is I read it and it was fine. It's going to be more work for you in terms of being the Personnel Officer for town and being the keeper of the records. You're comfortable with that?
What do you mean, as far as Personnel Records go? Yeah, it's, well, it's kind of codifying an HR position in which you're going to have to have sooner or later anyway. And so, and it falls basically in your office. So the day-to-day nuts and bolts of doing that would be between myself and Bree. She would handle that.
Okay. So we'll put this...
Resend that, just in case. Resend that to me.
Sure. I didn't send it to you. I thought I did, but maybe I...
No, I think we...
It could be like Christine and I saw it and just, I just didn't have a chance to read it this week.
No problem.
We had the holidays and we actually had a flood of stuff. So we'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Perfect.
All right. And then we were each going to at least think about other policy or procedures that we wanted to add. And I will admit, not really having time.
I did not.
Okay. All right. So those, we'll put that on the agenda for next week, too. So each of us should, because I think we're getting nearer the end of this and it would be good to move on from this.
Absolutely.
So maybe next week, we can see if there's anything we want to add. And if not, we'll call it a document for the time being.
Yeah, you may want to add, like I said, so just some excerpts out of family and medical leave. I mean, you know, that kind of, those sorts of things. Those are all, you're governed by state law on all of those, anyway.
Well, anything you think we should add, if you want to get to us and/or bring up next week.
Yeah.
So we'll call it a fix. Sir?
Quick question. So once this has all come together, even though you're still kind of calling it a live-in document, but does it go out to a review process to the public as an entire document? Or each policy is...
I think not. I think we feel like we've offered the opportunity for comment on each portion. And of course, it could be changed at any time, but I think we're going to consider this a finished document.
As of next week?
Well, each of, each of the parts that we have voted on, approved, asked for comments, are, in fact, policy at this point.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Solar updates.
I spoke with Aiden Foley last week. And we're still a couple of months away from the Lake Street issue. This is, I'm all talking, only talking on Lake Street now. One thing we have to do is we have to sit down with them and negotiate building fees, you know, permit fees, because the permit fees on a project like that are massive. And so generally, what you do is you make them part of the pilot. It's funny that, you know, town gets upfront, obviously, for its permit fees. And I'm not sure what we did with the first one that we built. I'd have to go back and look. I believe that's in the pilot as well. And it's based on a percentage of the cost of the, you know, the cost of the project. But that's really where it stands. They have, they have, in his email back to me, he says they're, they're still working with their investors, sort of getting them accustomed or comfortable with the ongoing litigation that they have up there. And they will be probably a couple of months away from pulling building permit fees, which is their plan on doing in the spring. So that's where it stands with the, with the Lake Street. And the lawyers are still bouncing. I'm not sure who has it right now, whether it's their lawyer or ours. I believe it may be ours now, at this point, has the copy of the pilot agreement in hand. So I'll find out. And then, and then at some point, we probably want to sit down with them and negotiate these fees, so you got that nailed down and then you can go proceed from there. But that's where we stand.
Okay. You're comfortable we're, we're up to speed?
Yeah, we're actually moving along. I mean, I'm surprised that they're actually, they're actually pushing to move ahead with Lake Street at this point, so...
But there's still ongoing litigation?
Yeah.
But they're obviously hopeful.
Yeah. You know, without getting too deeply into it, I think they, they're fairly competent that things will all work out, that they're trying to make their investors comfortable with it, because each projects are all done by investors.
Okay. Anything else on solar?
No.
Okay. Okay. So we're on to board goals and priorities. Public safety, Bill Lynn?
We have a meeting this week on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. Everyone's welcome, and it will be taped.
Which is lovely, but if people have questions or comments coming in and being part of it, it would be all the more fruitful. All right. We talked about the Community Compact and...
We need to start meeting pretty quick with them. So after we get this signed and into the contact at the Collins place, we had already talked about how she really wants to get the ball rolling. So I'll let you guys know what she comes up with. Susan Ossoff, her schedule was very crucial to these meetings. So once we get a schedule together, I'll keep you guys informed. So, you know, if you want to come, that would be great.
Love to come. So Susan is aware of, Finance Committee is aware of pretty substantial time commitment. Our Treasurer...
I have not reached out to them. I need to let all of them know, too. I wanted to wait for us to sign this first. So I'll inform them of what's going on. In fact, I can send everybody the contract, so they have an idea of what the scope of what we're going to be doing is.
Good idea.
And then we'll just go from there. So they really need to be accessible, so that we're able to go forward with this. And I'm sure they will. They were very interested in before and are a very helpful group, so I don't anticipate any issues with getting the ball rolling here.
This is to everybody's benefit.
Absolutely.
Especially within this building to run better. Okay. So do you want to run down quickly your list?
Sure. Annaleen already did the public safety building. Dale, fixed cost spreadsheet, how are you coming for that?
I'm working on it.
All right, so maybe next week?
I should have it soon for them, yeah.
Okay.
It's one more thing to pile onto the FinCom.
Perfect. Okay. We're already working on the job descriptions. I think after we get some other things squared away, we'll start, move on that. Town email, I haven't had an issue with it at all. Good. Yeah. How are you guys doing?
The only thing, when I get the minutes, they still don't have the town input or the date or anything. You know, the seal and the date.
Oh, you know, I didn't even look at that.
It's only a little issue for the date, so that I don't know which one I'm talking about.
You mean, has an attachment?
No. You know, when, when...
It's too plain.
When Bree prints it out, it has the seal and the heading that says it's the minutes for thus and such date. And when I print it out, it doesn't have any of that. When I call it up, it doesn't show it.
Interestingly, mine is just the reverse. It doesn't show up on the screen, but when I print it, it prints it out with that stuff.
Interesting.
And you should be just getting a copy of the file as it was written.
Right. So there's some kind of minor glitch that's...
I even saved it, as in that.
Yeah. Not sure where the glitch is, though. I'm not sure if it's not on the transmit end or the receive end, but...
Yeah. It's at Mark's that he does it.
He does a PDF and then send it.
I saved it as a Word. I saved it as a PDF. I can't edit it. It won't let me.
Oh, because it's a...
Well, if you spend $450 bucks...
So this is minor, but you know, if Mike comes in, you can...
Yeah. At least we get, and at least we're able to read it and load on it in a timely manner.
You asked me about sending out a blanked email to...
Yeah, could you just let everybody know what my email address is, my town email?
I can, but I...
I'm going to ask you not to let them know what mine is.
Well, that's what I, my question was, if I'm going to say that you, you know, you should address the Board with this email address, it should be B's email address, just rather than...
Mine came up the same way. If you hit Enable Editing, it all pops in. Okay.
Enable Editing.
Okay.
I'll try that.
Because mine looked exactly the same. And I haven't even read those yet.
All right. We'll keep one coming along.
Okay. But yeah, so, yeah, if you want to just let people know my email address, perfect. That would be awesome. All right. So Dale, you're, you're scheduling the monthly communication. You're getting the ball rolling on that, right?
Yeah, all the dates are in. We're probably, I'd probably schedule the first one tomorrow for sometime this month. I'm not sure. And it would just be sort of a get-together thing. I'm not sure. It's kind of like a, you know, hit or miss, because you don't get everybody on every day. So it'll, it may or may not be a full house when we do it.
Just kind of a roundtable. Perfect. All right. That sounds good. And I think the other ones, that's pretty much it.
Very good. So we have a few more minutes. Do you want to begin corresponding?
Sure.
I will just say, I had several things in my pile and my file that may not be in there, but I'll let you start and I'll add those as...
All right. From Susan Ossoff, from the Plumpton Finance Committee. We have their recommendation for the budget submittal deadline, which is Friday, February 5th.
Which probably includes us.
Yes, includes us. So we'll have to get in the role of that.
Absolutely. And I want to make sure Dale hears that.
I think he, does he have a copy of it? If he doesn't, I can get him one. Okay. From Joanne Barrow, this is to Chief Patrick Dillon. Dear Chief, on December 18th, we had a devastating fire which destroyed our beloved barn. The fire department did an admirable job of fighting to save it. The police officers in the cruiser that lined the street during the event deserve praise and thanks as well. I was particularly appreciative the next morning when one of the Plumpton police officers stopped by and offered support. He told me that he was on duty, indicated that I should not hesitate to contact him if I had any problems, and warned me that occasionally gawkers stopped by. I was still in a bit of daze, which was not totally cleared yet, and his presence and words were very comforting. It not only reflected well on the officer, it also spoke volumes about the department as a whole. Kindly convey my thanks to him for making the effort to reach out at a time when his reassuring presence meant so much. And that was Sergeant Brian Cranshaw and Officer Dan Hoffman. And then Brent Peterson was the supporting officer the next morning. So that's, great job. Well done.
Well done. Free going. Dale, we were, we were talking about the FinCom's budget requests for all departments, which includes us. I would like this year, once you get that done, for us to go over it together.
Yeah, definitely.
So that's February, early February.
February 5th.
Should they put us in for February?
February 5th.
So it's due. So well before that, at least two weeks before that, we ought to talk about it, if possible.
Which will be, what, like the...
Got a calendar?
The 18th is a holiday.
You want the right month?
Yeah. Right month would be good. You got the right year. So that's, we're not going to be meeting then, so I don't know. One week doesn't give them a whole lot of time, unless we can meet on Tuesday, the 19th.
Well, it'll be, I mean, unless we're going to add a whole lot to it, it won't be, I can have it to you next week. Unless you want to make some major changes. But I think probably the best thing to do is to, you know, is to do it for the, you know, do it, and then you guys can discuss it if you want to add to it or subtract from it.
So why don't you get what you can done, can done for next week, so that we can discuss it and have another meeting to finalize stuff?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, FinCom is asking that your main budget request sheet, you present a level service budget only.
Well, that's easy.
Yes.
That's, that's easy.
I mean, one thing we're going to have to look at is...
Then why should they ask it? They should just go with the one they had last year, because that's what they're looking for.
I mean, one thing we have to look at is the legal line, which has been a problem in the past and, and is impossible to predict year to year.
Well, I mean, it's, it's 2015. You know, legal is what legal is. It's sort of outgrown. I mean, we're, it's rather remarkable that the town's been able to keep its legal budget where it has been over the past few years, because other towns are twice as much.
So not, not to overburden you this week, but could you check with the accountant and see how we are this year? I think we've been pretty good, but to see if we're on target. I mean, last year, we had to have a reserve transfer. Hopefully, we don't this year, but it'd be good to get a sense of where we're at on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that and I'll let you know. And then, and then after that, I mean, I...
As best we can, I think we have to model the behavior that we want all the other boards and departments to model, which is that reserve transfers are rare, other than an emergency.
Well, that's, I mean, you know, the definition for FinCom reserve transfer is extraordinary and unforeseen. So I mean, you know, if you have an emergency, it's no problem. That's unforeseen and extraordinary. Sometimes somebody drops a legal bomb on you and you've got to do the billing. That's also, it falls under the same category.
And that one certainly happens. I think that the emergency nature of that has been kind of elastic. And I think we've had a move the last couple of years toward reducing that elasticity. And we just, as best we can, if we can keep modeling that behavior, I think that's good.
I mean, I'm not...
Didn't we mention trying to change our contract with them?
Yes. To go into more of, to a fixed cost for the year. But I don't think it would be with Copeland and Page. I think we would have to leave Copeland and Page to do that. And I don't know, I mean, is that a year to year? We don't sign a contract with them.
Yeah, yeah, it's an annual appointment. It's an annual appointment for a legal, a town council is an annual appointment. It's one of your appointments you do every year. So you could change, but I mean, you're, you're doing...
Do we know that they wouldn't do that?
We don't know for sure.
I'm not sure exactly what you mean by a fixed cost. In other words, here's X amount of dollars, do our legal work for the year.
Like, they charge us $45,000 for the year.
It's not going to work, not in the legal profession.
But there are, there are people that do it.
There are the two.
Town Council?
Ducksbury did it. Yeah. Ducksbury did it, fixed contract, pretty much written out what's covered, what wouldn't be covered, what it would cost for stuff that isn't covered. I mean, they got into all kinds of problems over there because of some unclarity and all that. I mean, my concern with looking at that this year is we've got a fair number of ongoing things that would be really hard to make any change right now.
I mean, you can change them, but I mean, at the end of the day, you're going to have a, you're, you're going to have a hard time finding counsel that's going to, you know, that's going to do it. You're going to have a hard time finding counsel that's going to do it for what we've been budgeting the last, you know, the last five or six years of the...
Well, at least the last four or five years since I've been here.
And then again, I mean, Plumpton's town council budget is about half what it is in any other community of even, you know, even similar size or, you know.
The big advan...
We tend to have the same problems as a town with 10,000 people.
The big advantage of a fixed contract is that people are not hesitant to go and get advice.
Right.
And avoid getting into big things. On the other hand, I think we've been pretty, very good, in fact, about reminding boards and committees and giving them the opportunity to spend a little time with town council before they get into trouble. All right.
I think one of the guides we used to work with at Copeland and Page actually does this. Can I explore this and see?
Yeah, sure.
And try to see if I can get a proposal from him?
Mr. Bowen, who used to be town council...
Yeah, Rich Bowen.
Does this as well.
Right. Exactly. And he was our council for a long time.
And he's funny.
He is a nice guy. So I'll look into...
It's good to have lawyers.
Getting a proposal for him to see what he would do for our annual legal...
Yeah, do you, do you have any copies of that, whatever that fixed cost contract is that some...
I don't, but I can...
But I would like to see that, because I mean, if that's the case, we could, I mean, we certainly could branch out and we could certainly send an RFP out.
Yeah, and we can see if Copeland and Page can do something, too, if they would be willing to do something.
Because how would that affect our ongoing litigation? Wouldn't necessarily want to change horses in the middle of the street.
I mean, they finish, sometimes the current will finish out something that they're into and sometimes they will take over. You know, the new one will take over. It all depends on what's, I mean, we've got a couple of things that they would probably just stay with, because they've been with them for several years. But some of the stuff could just be, just turned over to new counsel if he changes.
To new counsel.
Well, at least we'll do our due diligence.
All right. I'll work on it. We'll see what we can do.
All right. So we'll wait for the reporter to come back in just a moment.
Okay.
But you have one more small item or... But you have one more small item or?
Sure, let's see if we can do another small item.
And by the way, we forgot to, um, approve the executive session minutes from twelve fifteen. Actually, we didn't, I forgot to. But since we're having an executive session next week, we can do it then. All right, actually, here comes the reporter.
Okay, perfect.
So, it's six thirty, we have Plumpton citizen Jeff Randall in to, um, discuss with us an agricultural venture that he'd like to present.
How is everyone tonight?
Good, how are you doing, Jeff?
Very good.
Christine Dale, I haven't met you.
No, you have, it's very nice to meet you.
Okay, yeah, very good.
I have a proposed indoor grow facility, um, for medical marijuana, uh, for agricult- in the agricultural area. And, um, these are copies of a packet that I prepared for the town.
Do you have anything for the paper?
I can get a copy of it.
Okay, you can-
Or you can take mine, 'cause I actually have it, Jeff emailed it to all of us too, which was wonderful, thank you for doing that.
It, basically, I could take, kinda take you through it. Um, Massachusetts voted to adopt a policy of, um, allowing, uh, medical marijuana as a prescription, or they've issued doctors licenses. They've had a little, um, lag in actually producing the medicine. And we filed with a NOI with the state for a permit to be a producer and a dispenser. What we're proposing for Plumpton is a grow facility on my property where my residence is, it's like a hundred and thirty-three acres there. If you look in the very back of the filing, just to give you a little history, um, the second to last page, we had originally proposed a, um, two bogs, a, uh, a maintenance facility and a riding ring. And that, uh, that was approved, I think in ninety, uh, two thousand eight, I think. And we're actually, our plan, we were working with Rutgers University, and our plan was to become a propagator for the northeast. But, uh, because of the economics in the cranberry market, um, it just wasn't, you know, we just didn't feel confident that, you know, we could, we could make that work. So, it's kind of been sitting idle and, uh, we've been looking for, uh, something that's agricultural nature that we could do. So, basically, uh, the way it works in Massachusetts is, um, you take the, the easiest way is to take that popping off. This is the type of building that, uh, we would, we would be interested in putting up and it's, uh, that, this happens to be a Morton building. And this is a nursery in New York that has a building that's similar to that, but not the same purpose. The second sheet is, um, is, uh, just a, uh, index. The third, this, the next packet, which is B, basically, that's, um, it's called sighting profiles. And in the process of going through the permitting with the state, they require that the town either, um, issues a letter of, uh, non-opposition or support for a project of this type. So basically, this, this kind, this is, um, uh, this is, this really kind of explains why we need a letter of support through the, in, in what the state has formulated. So, you know, you kinda, when you, when you read through it, it basically, um, I think, uh, on page six, there's a, like a form letter that shows us, that shows you what type of a letter we'd have to have. And, um, I think in, in the last page, um, what I did was include, um, uh, the- Oh, a copy, basically, a formatted copy of what the letter would look like. The sec-, uh, the next section, which is A, I had them a little out of order, um, is the-
Specter A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, is the guidance for municipalities regarding the regulations. And, uh, that's really, talks about the intricacies of, um, how this is set up and the different types of, uh, dispensary combination grow facility. I'm sorry, uh, C is, is basically the, what the letter would look like that would ask you to sign. D is, um, in this process, they provide, uh, there's a provision for a community hosting agreement. And, um, this is a, um, uh, initial proposal for what, um, uh, as far as the grow facility, what they, what we think the, the grow facility will produce and the benefit in economic value to the town.
Is this a direct payment to the town?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? These, these, those numbers are indirect?
That would be a direct payment to the town, correct. If you don't mind me taking a seat. Um, we think it's a good fit because it's agricultural, it allows us some diversity. We currently have cranberries, we run a horse farm, and, um, um, it's, uh, it's agriculture, so we're kind of excited about it.
So what you're coming to us for is either a letter of non-opposition or a letter of support?
Yes, that's correct.
And, um, the sample letter you've given us, uh, first paragraph simply says, we're offering one of those. The second paragraph says that the Board of Selectmen has verified with the appropriate local officials, that it will be used for cultivation only and that it's in a zoning district where there is the right to do this. So presumably, before, we would be able to-
Oh, absolutely, I, I, this, I think this is a process that, you know, um, you have to contact other boards and board members and, you know, probably town, run it by town council and this is not something that, I'm here a little bit early 'cause as, um, we're in the, what they call the MOP, which is our submission of operation profile. And, um, it's not until we get into our sighting section, which is the next phase, that we actually have to get that from the town. But, you know, I wanted to put it in front of you now so that you had plenty of time to think about whether it's the right fit for the town, whether, um, the economics look right, um, you know, uh-
And you're feeling like there's not an issue with zoning?
That's correct, right. We're, we're confident that this fits into, oh, I, I did, I did actually, sorry. Okay, so, um, what I did is, oh, I, I did, I did the, uh, a copy for all of you guys about the Plumpton zoning law.
Which you emailed.
Right.
Yeah, right, right, right. So, I made a copy for everybody and I just highlighted the section that applies to the agricultural aspect of it. 'Cause that's all we, we, we have any interest in, in Plumpton is, we highlighted those.
So again, just to say it out loud for the camera or whatever, there, there is no dispensary?
Absolutely no dispensary, that's correct. This is a, just a grow facility, this is just an agricultural operation.
Are there any active grow facilities in Massachusetts?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, what they do is they call it co-location sometimes, where they put the dispensary and the grow facility in the same place. You know, that, I think that's an okay model, um, I don't think that's the most beneficial model because I think agriculture should take place in the agricultural zone, uh, and I think, uh, that's the best use of it. It provides open space, it provides jobs, um, you know, I think-
Do you have any names or locations for any of the places?
Um, Channel Five did a special on, uh, Chronicle did a special on it. And, um, there's a lot of links to dispensaries in there. Also, if you go to the mass.gov website and you look for the, um, uh, the section that handles the medical marijuana, um, section, you can see everything. It, there's like fifty-six pages of regulations that are just for that, um, aspect of it. I also brought you each a copy of, um, that, oh, forty, it's forty A. And that's, uh, that's the, how, how this fits into the agricultural use.
Forty A contains one of the longest sentences-
It is the longest sentence in the history, I think.
-of legal stuff. Um, it is almost incomprehensible.
And then, um, this is a follow-up, they refer to, like, section one, one twenty-eight in the definition of agriculture in the MGL, so, that's just general, but, so, that's just, that's really just a guidance. And we've been over this, you know, I've been over this with, uh, my, my attorney, we're, we're confident that it's an agricultural endeavor and it fits within the bylaw. We think that Copeland and Page will, will agree with that aspect of it.
So the main, you would be operating under a special permit granted by the planning board?
You know, I think the way it actually works is, if it's agricultural, I think you're exempt from the special permit, but you have to meet all the state and federal and local town regulations that are required for the grow facility. As far as like the perimeter security, all the things, the state has a tremendous amount of, uh, stopgaps and protections in place. Some of the growers use barcodes, there's a very stringent, um, uh, inventory control process that, you know, has to be accounted for. So the, um, the agricultural aspect of it, um, is, uh, where there's no dispensary actually should fall under the agricultural exemption so that we can do it in an agricultural zone. But all the, um, all the intricacies of the mass law apply to it, you know, so, you know, bond carriers, uh-
And as you said, it, it's completely contained within a building, there's nothing growing outside the field.
And that's what the law, that's what the law actually, Massachusetts law states that's required, yeah.
Abutters, um, have you had contact with them?
You know, I've talked to several of my, my abutters, I haven't talked to all of them. Everybody I've talked to has had positive feedback, um, and, uh, you know, I know that that's part of the process too because I wanna obviously answer anyone's concerns. Um, you know, my residence is there, so if I didn't think this was a, um, or, you know, a, 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 a good thing for myself, my family and the town, I wouldn't do it. You know, I've made a significant investment in, in my place and, you know, and I'm, I'm very happy that we're involved in agriculture. But it, and it is something that I think, um, you know, will help us continue to operate our farm on a, you know, a basis where you get a little diversity and, you know, make it successful.
So the town would benefit financially in terms of increased property taxes?
Yes, that's correct. That, that's taxed at, um, whatever the, uh, I think it's probably under the residential building rate or commercial building rate, I don't really know how you do it.
Same rate.
Same rate, six, uh, was it eighteen?
Seventeen, in charge.
Seventeen, yeah. Um, so yes, the building itself and any improvements that, um, were to be done on the property, the town receives those tax revenues.
So it'd benefit that way, we'd benefit by the hosting agreement?
Yes, that's correct.
And your expectation, your projection for year three, you figure that would be, um, uh, probably going forward in that range?
Yeah, let me, I just wanna-
That's labeled D and E.
You know why? I forgot to put the label on the last two, 'cause I couldn't get them printed fairly enough, but, um, this is not my best, but this is not my forte. Uh, let's see, excuse me while I fumble around a little bit.
I actually have ours if you want.
Oh, yeah, that'd be easy for me, I guess, thank you very much. Yeah, you know, that, our projections, you know, I, we, we hope that we can meet those projections. Those are, um, targets that we think the, uh, you know, I don't think anyone really knows how the figures are all gonna work out, but those are modeled after, um, states that have a similar program in place. So that's, uh, that's our anticipated revenues and, or our anticipated, uh, production and that, those would be revenues that would be directly paid to the town.
Where did you get the, um, price per pound?
That's an average based on, I think it's eight states. Um, you mean the price to you per pound?
Yeah.
Oh, that, that was, that was just a number that we've, we, we tried to think of something that was reasonable, would benefit the town and, um, you know.
And never is negotiated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it, we, you know, we're, we're open to communication about that and that. And, uh, I tried to think of something that, you know, once, you know, if we were successful and the venture worked as we hoped it would, um, that, uh, you know, we could, you know, make a, it would be a benefit to the town.
You have an erected building for this, yeah, you-
Oh, no, go-
Be erecting? How many square feet did you plan on?
It's probably ten thousand square feet, um, which is, um, it's a hundred and eighty by sixty, something like that. I don't know what the perfect shape of the building is, but, um, that, you know, common, uh-
All artificial growing?
Yes.
Hydroponic?
Nope, no, I think it's gonna be soil-based.
Soil-based?
Yeah, um, and our plan is to, uh, use solar, we, the way we have the building sited, um, it's facing, um, true south. So we think that, um, we can recover a significant, uh, benefit by using solar in our design. And also, you know-
What lighting system would you use, LED or?
You know, we've, we've looked at LED, they're having some trouble with it in the industry. Apparently, it doesn't, um, won't penetrate the leaf to the depth that the, the leaf can provide photosynthesis. So they're, they're having trouble with, uh, growing healthy plants with LEDs, but that would be the most desirable. We actually on our, in our-
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, in our riding ring, uh, for our, for our boarding facility, um, we spent a significant amount of money. We bought four large LED lights. Um, and one of the advantages to LED is that it spreads the light out very evenly, so you can actually have a lower light level, um, and a lot lower, um, amperage draw and provide this, you know, actually better lighting because it's, it's more diverse, you don't have to go from that light to dark. So, I'm a big fan of, um, uh, of LEDs, but I, I don't know if they're going to be available in the, you know, they fit the design that-
Considerably more expensive than-
Yeah, but a lot of those costs pay back. I know sometimes solar will pay back over like a four and a half year period. Depends on the use, the cost, the design, so, you know, those are a lot of complexities. We, we've actually had a chance to work with, uh, Massachusetts, in our, in our cranberry operation. We have, uh, our, uh, our two pump stations are automated. We have telemetry that tells us, um, what the temperature is at the vine tip. We set the program in the pump house to turn on automatically once it hits that threshold temperature. And we, we get that from, uh, from UMass, uh, the, uh, Cranberry Station at UMass, they'll give us what the tolerance is. So, um, we've spent a lot of time in our primary operation, making it the most efficient model that we possibly can. We run two tier-three diesel motors that are probably about the cleanest diesels I've ever seen. And their fuel consumption, we match the Impella precisely to the, uh, demand so that our pumps run at a very high level of efficiency. And it takes a little bit of work and, you know, but we're, we're pretty happy with it, so.
And you plan on maintaining your cranberry?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I'd never give up my cranberries, you know.
All right, I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
I read the CMR and in my reading of it, it looks like you cannot offer cultivation as a standalone activity. That the very definition of this-
And where was the CMR?
This is in the, um, one oh five CMR, the Department of Public Health.
Okay.
Which is one oh five CMR, seven twenty-five, zero, 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 the implementation of an act for the humanitarian medical use of marijuana.
Okay.
So, it says-
'Cause I know they do have standalone grow facilities.
Um, not without an RMD, you have to have an RMD.
What?
And that allows you the standalone, let me just find the definition here.
Oh, yeah, we have an RM, we, we will have an RMD, but it won't be in Plumpton.
Okay, it says only, yeah.
That's, that's, okay, I'm sorry, we have, we have, we haven't chosen a site for our, for the dispensary.
Okay.
But that's not gonna be in Plumpton. I didn't mean that we, we didn't have one, we have to have one.
Yes, you're right, you have to have it.
Absolutely, yes, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't even just grow-
Oh, no, 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 no.
-without an RMD, okay.
No, I didn't mean to think-
Okay, it's just not in, in our town.
It's not, it's not in Plumpton, yeah. I just don't think it's a good fit, that's all.
Okay, all right, um, yes, that was my concern, is that I-
Oh, yeah, no, 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 oh, yeah, absolutely.
-there was nothing in here about an RMD, that it wasn't even allowed.
Yeah, they, and they, they, they allow you to do what they call co-located, which is-
Right.
-the grow and the dispensary in the same site, or they allow you to do, um, remote-located cultivation, which is what we plan on doing, and that can happen in an agricultural zone. And the dispensary has to go through all of the, so when we go to a different, another town that, um, is where, where the town thinks it's right and where we think it's right, um, we'll develop a plan with them, given their bylaws and in conjunction with all the state. So we'll work with them on that facility spot, but those are, even though they're, they are connected and we do have dispensaries that are going to be attached to this, this facility, the only thing that this facility in Plumpton does is a remote agricultural operation.
Okay, all right, so do you, are, you don't have an application for an RMD in yet, right?
We do not.
You do not, okay. Are you looking, 'cause it, I mean, the, um, the deadline was a while ago, wasn't it, to put in an application for these?
Oh, no, we, we already filed our NOI, uh, before the end of September, which was our requirement. And we've, um, already been accepted, so after you file the NOI, they invite you back to the MOP to submit your operating plan.
Okay.
How, how about explaining what the acronyms are for, oh my gosh, it's just-
NOI, I'm sorry, believe me, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty complicated process.
It's a very complicated process.
NOI is a notice of intent, so basically, you're just notifying the state within the guidelines that they've set forth that you have, you have a whole packet that has to be submitted on the personnel, the nonprofit, the whole package has to go to them.
Right, okay.
And then, as soon as they basically accept the, um, uh, the, the initial packet, um, under the, and it's, it's a, um, a quantitative process. So, basically, they have to check all the, but you have to provide all the information, check all the boxes. And then, and as, when that gets accepted, you go to the MOP, which is when you submit your operating plan. So, that's the phase that we're in now and we're working on submitting our operating plan. We don't actually have to have a letter from the town for the reco-, for the remote location of the grow facility until we go into the sighting phase. But, I wanna give everybody plenty of time to, you know, make sure that this is a good fit for the town.
Okay.
And that's what, and it, and it does, when you look at the paperwork, I am here probably a little bit prematurely 'cause we really should be in the sighting phase, but I think the problem with that is, boy, it doesn't give you much time to like really think through what the advantages and disadvantages are and, and what the right thing is. And I think that's a, you know, I think that's critically important, 'cause I wanna do, um, you know, I want this to be, I'd like my operation to be a model for what the state's gonna do in the future. I don't, uh, you know, I don't think co-location is, you know, really a viable, uh, uh, you know, I don't think it's a, I think it, let me rephrase that. I think that a remote grow location with individual dispensaries is a better model. And I think that for a lot of different reasons. And I think that for a lot of different reasons.
Well, you couldn't do it, 'cause you'd be required to go to a business district.
Oh, and here, and you could, you could in Plimpton, but there's a lot of disadvantages in that. And, and a dispensary in Plimpton, I don't think is a, is a good fit for us, the town.
What happens if you don't get a permit for the dispensary?
I don't get to go forward.
Right.
Here.
And how soon will you know about that?
I think, you know, I think it's, I'm a positive.
It looks like it's kind of a rolling process.
Yeah, you can't, you have to, you know, you could do it one step at a time. So if you approve it, and then I get my dispensary in another town approved, then they'll go ahead, and then there's, there's a lot of other facets that you have to meet. And once you do all that, and once everybody's agreed that it's ready to go, then you can start your grow facility up and you can start your dispensary, although you probably need to have product, there's a little lag time in there. But, and I don't know the intricacies of how that works. I do know that you can't grow unless you have an approved dispensary.
Right.
So they, they do go hand in hand, although they don't have to be approved, I don't think they have to be approved simultaneously. You know, we can get a letter of non-opposition from you guys, and then we can submit our letter to our location for another town in the area where they wanted their, the dispensary, and they'll submit their letter. But we need, and you need those letters to kinda go forward. You know, I look at it like it's a kind of a proof of concept. You know, is, do you guys think this is the right thing for the town? And, and that's, that's basically, each town, I think, gets to make that choice. And that's a requirement of Massachusetts General.
Do you have a sense of the timeframe for this, of weeks, months on, on a letter of non-opposition?
You know, I, I think that, I think that if the people, if the people that you needed to have look at this with you were all in agreement, I think you could do it in a few weeks. I don't, I don't think it's, you know, of course, from my perspective, I don't think it's really that complicated in, as far as this, this part of it. Because all I, you know, what I see truly is, you know, benefits for, you know, our farm facility, the town, you know. But other people may not, you know, see that, you know, so I don't.
And everything would be at your location?
Where I live.
And it is more than 500 feet from the denne?
Absolutely.
There's no, like, home preschools or anything around there?
My closest neighbor's house is about 1,000 feet.
Okay.
And, and I have talked to her. She's the person that would be most affected by our agricultural operation. And, you know, and I, I talked to her, she's like, "Oh, Jeff, you know, I'd, I'd like to come in and, you know, you know, basically, you know, tell the board that I'm fine with you doing this." So, you know, if we have, you know, if that becomes part of the process, certainly the, the person that's the closest would be the one that's most affected. And that, and it's about 1,000 feet. So it's a, that, that lot where we're proposing it was called the island lot. And it's basically, when we filed for the permit to do the, the initial Cranbury block, we had to do a crossing. And really, the only way to get to that spot is across that crossing. And, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a really good location because it's, it's completely isolated. There's, I don't know how far it is actually from the roadway. I would guess it's probably a half a mile from asphalt. You know, it's very, you know, very isolated.
Okay. All right. I'm not a huge fan. I, I would not go non-opposition or support. At this point, I have no idea how the townspeople feel about this. And I think that we need to solicit some input before we make a decision. And, I mean, historically, the town's been pretty conservative on our votes and elections. It does look like in 2016, there's gonna be a ballot question for legalizing marijuana. But I just don't feel comfortable either not opposing it or supporting it without getting input from our residents to see if, you know, how they feel about this. Is it being good for the town? I personally don't think it is. I mean, there's, there are a lot of benefits. The, the revenue is, is huge, and we definitely need tax dollars. We're, would be getting fees associated with the building permits. This is commercial agriculture. Jeff is a local farmer, and this is a creative way for him to farm his land. We're a right-to-farm community. I mean, there's, there are many things that, you know, are definitely in your favor. I just personally don't support it. And I, I just wanna know how, you know, the town feels about it before we make a commitment. And if the town supports it, I'll support it. But for me, right now, I'm just, I'm tentative, or, you know, I'm hesitant about this. It just makes me a little bit nervous. It's not legal at this point. It is legal for medical purposes, which is what you're looking to do. But I think it's just kind of a new thing, and I'm a little bit nervous about this.
If you have a chance, I don't know if you, if the video or link is still available through Channel Five. There's a, a program that dated on Chronicle.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
And that really is a, I think that gives you a very good idea of, you know, I think one of the things that they're trying to change is the problem with opiates. They talk about the pain relief that they can get from some of the products that medical marijuana is made into. You can get about 60% of the pain relief with no addictive side effects and no effects of euphoria. So, you know, it, it's a medicine that they are gonna be, they are gonna be using in, in the, I think the problem that we have with opioids is that, you know, they, they give us some significant problems.
Oh, we have a huge drug problem in this area, this country, and it just, it's, it's awful. It's awful.
So I think that part of it is, if you look at the piece with Bob Lobel, I think, you know, he has some serious issues with pain. And he's, he's benefited significantly as an individual from, from those products that, that he uses that are based on it, so.
I will definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, it really, that was very insightful, I thought.
I'd love to see that as, as well. I'm not opposed to it. I, I don't know if I, I would go with non-opposition or, or being in favor at this point, but I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
And I, I, I fully hear Christine's piece, and I surely, I think we, we have, we'll have to craft some way to hear from townspeople. I think maybe we'll work on that along the way and some constructive way to do that.
It wouldn't take long for us to get.
At least if there are people with strong opinions either way, we definitely wanna feel that we've heard from them and want them to feel heard.
And those issues should be addressed. You know, if there are already, if there are things that haven't, that there, that are, you know, haven't been addressed by the, by the state, it's something I'm sure that the town could address. I did meet with the chief of police probably a month ago. And I sat down with him and we had a good meeting. And, you know, as far as, you know, security is concerned, you know, any aspect of security would be, you know, a, a marriage between his office and whatever we had to do. So, you know, I think there's a, I think we'd have to look at what the concerns are and then see if we can address those concerns if, you know, if we can.
So that's one piece we may certainly have to hear from townspeople and listen really carefully. I think the other piece is there's a bunch of boards and commissions that we're gonna have to hear from before we could sign a document, at least the words that you've given us.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's the, those words are really from the, I just put it on a piece of paper so you can see what it looks like.
Right out of the documentation, yeah, yeah.
And the only thing I put that, that was different is, it didn't have a place for a locate, a, a, a remote facilities location, although they talk about it. And it sounded like I wanted you to have an RMD here, which is a dispensary, and that's not what I want. So I did put language in there that did address that.
Okay.
So I just, that's the only thing that was different.
With those things in mind, I'm actually very enthusiastic about this project. I mean, I don't know what'll come up, and my opinion could change. We are a right-to-farm community. We are an agricultural community. I think this is the exact right kind of use for this land. I think quite a bit of revenue, this could be $50,000 a year to the town. God only knows we need it. It will take plenty of safeguards, which at least it looks like you've done well on. My brother is actually a world expert on the medical uses of marijuana. And I do a lot of herbal medicine. And I do have to say, I think this has the potential to be a really powerful and cost-effective drug. It's gonna be grown somewhere. So I, I, I think there's tons of potential here. I think we all have, we have work to do. You have tons of work to do.
I do, I do.
I am impressed with your presentation and the detail.
Nice job.
Oh, thanks. And, and you know, it's, it's my, I don't know if you've, I, I hope that you all get a chance to come by my place. I, you know, I've worked, you know.
It's a beautiful place.
I had the opportunity that a lot of people don't get to do, and that is, I get to do almost all of it myself. I just, yesterday, I just finished building new doors for the barn, you know. It, it is, I think that's the greatest part of farming, is that you get to put things in place and then enjoy them. As a, you know, that's all the fencing that I did on my property for the horses. I took down the trees. I hired a portable mill. We milled up all the stock. I put every post in, and I don't know if I got a mile or two miles of fencing, but it's a lot. And so I used the trees that we took down prior to building the Cranbury block, to build the fences. And some of the barn materials that we used to build the barn, we did. Our pump house is all made out of our materials that we harvested off the land. So it's been, it's a lot of fun to do, and it's a unique experience for me because I get to, you know, be a part of it and grow it and nurture it. And, you know, that's a, that's a very fulfilling thing, so.
And you got some beautiful horses there, too.
Oh, thank you very much. And if you get a chance, I would invite you all to come by and just, you know, see what it's like. And we've, we've worked kinda hard trying to make it right.
Good to have a Plimpton farmer who enjoys what he's doing.
And the regulations are so strict, where if this were to happen, that I think people could feel comfortable with the security that's gonna be required. And, you know, the different steps that you're gonna have to maintain. Inventory, you know, quarry checks, and, I mean, everything, they cover everything in this.
Everything. And the, on the individuals, everyone that's involved in the nonprofit, they actually do a CSI, there's a, is a company that does the background check. So, you know, you, you have to be, you know, a very, very upstanding citizen to be involved in the, in the process.
And over 21. You can't have anyone working for you that's under 21. And I mean, it, everything is spelled out on here, so if anybody wanted to read it, it's some very good information.
It really is. And it's a, hopefully, it's a comprehensive, I think it's a very comprehensive program. I think the criticisms of anyone that's looked at it was that the towns, that, that the state's gone a little bit overboard on regulation. But I don't think so. I think it's a, I think it's one of those things that let, let's start with a strict model, and then let's see what things that we don't have to, you know, what things aren't, aren't really necessary. You know, what things we can, you know, make work. And, and as it changes, you know, hopefully it'll work in a very smooth operation.
So how do we solicit public response?
I'm not sure yet. I, I would think maybe getting the word out in a few weeks, possibly inviting Jeff in again.
Yeah, anytime, sure.
And.
And I can bring in the, the, the group that I look for, for information is a company called Forefront. And the gentleman, Chris Kane, is involved in working with the state on the regulatory process. So if you wanted to, I can bring him here. He can, he can probably answer a lot more questions than I can.
I think that would be a good idea.
I'm an operations guy. I make it all work.
You just do the work.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I don't.
Maybe we'll aim for a few weeks from now to do that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Really appreciate you coming in and.
Well, thank you so much. I wish my packet was a little more.
Oh, your packet was beautiful.
That's a great packet. Next time, we need to do a presentation for coming to you.
Actually, my, my wife.
Lisa, I'm sure she did everything.
Well done, well done.
You're supposed to move that last tab, and he didn't.
See, the one thing that I had to do, I didn't do.
And nice paper, too.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
So we'll be in touch about setting up a time to get together.
All right. I do see town clerk lurking in the back of the room, not lurking, sitting primly in the back of the room.
I'm not sure if any, did you mention anything about the way I was posting?
Haven't got there yet. You wanna have the discussion?
What is it?
So I had sent a email, I'm not sure if you all got it, but I was remiss in hope the way I was posting the.
Good night. Thanks, John.
Great to see you.
All right, I don't really know, so it'll take me more time.
All right, so now, we're full attention.
I was posting, when we posted the website, our open meetings and executive sessions, I was trying to make it easier for the residents by having it listed separately so that they knew that they weren't public when it was executive session, so they weren't coming at that time. But I have learned and have some examples now from a lot of other town clerks. And also people that use the same virtual town hall website that we use, how they post the meetings. And I didn't really make the connection, I knew how to conduct an open session and then go into executive session and then go back out if you had to. But in terms of posting to the website, I wasn't doing it accurately, so I was looking for some advice. And I've gotten a couple of samples I've printed for how other selectmen or any other board includes the executive session on their agenda. So they do post it at the regular open session, meeting time. Most of them do it at the ends of their meetings because then they don't have to worry how long they go into their executive sessions. And if they can, there's a section of the law that says if you have the ability to announce whether the open session will reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session, you would include that as well. So if you're anticipating that being the last thing you're gonna discuss, it allows residents to leave the regular open session meeting and not worry that they're going to miss anything at the end. But one of the key things that I don't think we've been doing, because I've looked back at how we do have it separated where it says open and then executive, it does include the Mass General Law chapter. And Mark and I were talking about that today, that it gives specific, the chapter and section number. And then in the agenda, you should also include what section of the section it is. So it's.
The reason for executive session?
Yeah, the Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. And then there's only four or five reasons, so you should put the number, that, the reason why you're going into it.
I think there's 10.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So I just, I, yeah, there are 10. So I just printed the actual law and an example. And then these are three towns that I've printed the selectman executive session, so you can see, so.
All right, so why don't we look at that between now and next week and probably discuss it for the next week? I, I'm, I have to think hard about whether I want an executive session at the end of the night, but.
Right, it's just, it's, it's up to you, but I know that a lot of towns do that only for the reason why they don't have to worry about how long it goes.
All right, well, let's, we'll take a look at this.
Okay, thank you, Tara.
The only reason why it came up was because of postings to the website. And I had been doing them separate so that people wouldn't come when they couldn't come in anyways. But I was not doing that properly, and that's why it came up. And my assistant usually does the postings and she's out, so I was doing them and looking at them going, "Wait a minute." So anyways, that's why it came up, and that's what I learned about it today, so I thought I would just pass it along.
Thank you for sharing that information. All right, bye.
Okay, so I'll photocopy this and get to each of you before we leave tonight. And we'll be, have it on the agenda for next week. I think we're back, oh, all right. So we'll get back to correspondence, but we didn't do town coordinator. Probably we hit all your stuff. Probably we hit all your stuff.
Yeah, we did, we hit most of them. I do have your copies for you on the issue, the dog issue, and the first page is the exchange of email between myself and the dog officer.
And we'll put that on the agenda for next week.
And the second page is the memo from Halifax ACO. The third page is the memo from our ACO. And the fourth page is the letter received today from Halifax. They are filing a complaint under our dog laws.
So you have one for each of us?
Yeah, one for each of you.
Thank you very much, Joe.
We'll be on that for next week.
Is that public yet? Can I have a copy or?
Uh, sure.
I've seen Frank Bush's letter.
What?
I've seen Frank Bush's.
Yeah, no, it's.
You mean, yeah, the only thing beyond the one from Frank Bush is the letter that was received from Halifax today.
I would love to see if you don't.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll photocopy that, we'll go into photocopy mode as soon as the meeting's done.
Okay, yeah, get a copy of that for you.
All right, anything else from you, Dale? Any, anything else? Okay, back to correspondence, interrupt us.
Okay, so from the town of Halifax, Dear Mr. Bush, the Halifax Board of Selectmen is filing a complaint as outlined in Section ten, disturbing the peace of Article twenty-one, Rules and Regulations Relative to the Control of Dogs in the Town of Plimpton and the Town of Plimpton Bylaws in Connection with a Dog Located on a Property in Plimpton on West Street that abuts the property where the Winnetucks at Children's Place on East Street in Halifax is located. The Board has received a complaint that the dog has acted in an intimidating manner towards the employees, students, and teachers of the Winnetucks at Children's Place. The Board asks that the Plimpton Animal Control Officer investigate this matter and determine whether the dog is properly licensed and has an up-to-date vaccination record per Section six of said bylaw, and if it is acting in an intimidating manner and/or has entered onto the property of the Winnetucks at Children's Place. The Board asks that the Animal Control Officer issue a report to the Plimpton Board of Selectmen once an investigation is completed and the Plimpton Board of Selectmen take whatever actions are necessary, including issuing any fines for failure to properly license or vaccinate the dog and whether any permanent order should be approved restraining the dog at any and all times. If you have any questions concerning this matter, please contact me, Charlie Seelig. So we're discussing it next week, but we're not having a dog hearing, correct?
Correct, it's not really, at this point, it's not really a dog hearing. It's an issue in Halifax, the animal apparently is resident in Plimpton. So essentially, when the message went out, the memo returned from our ACO said for whatever reason, I don't have it here, said for whatever reason, he wouldn't or couldn't do what, under our bylaw, Halifax is now requesting he do. So that's the situation as it stands.
All right, so what are we doing, bringing Frank in next week to talk about it? Or are we just going to talk about it?
Well, I haven't, I haven't read through.
I haven't read it either, this is the.
Maybe we should invite Frank in, otherwise it'll just drag on forever.
It's just going to drag on, yeah.
All right, so I'll invite him in.
Okay, perfect.
Hopefully he can come, and that'll give us a chance to read over the whole thread.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, from the Chief Orsari, the fire department is in dire need for new air packs for firefighting operations for the past two years. I've written an AFG grant for the replacement of this equipment. We have not been approved, it has been on our capital improvement request and the finance committee is aware of it. In the process of writing a new grant jointly with seven other towns in Plymouth County, we believe there will be a better chance for approval from FEMA, which I think is right if you get together with other towns. The total cost for Plimpton, the total cost for Plimpton requested is one hundred forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. As a result of this grant application, if Plimpton is approved, our town will be responsible for the matching funds of ten percent of the award we receive. The amount would be a little over fourteen thousand dollars. These figures are still in the fine-tuning phase, the grant application is due by January fifteenth. Approval may or may not be awarded in this fiscal year. So he'll discuss more information as it becomes available.
And I have checked with the Chair of FinCom, let her know. I have strong doubts that this is going to happen in this fiscal year and if so, we'll be able to deal with it and part of the new budget. But it sort of sounds like a no-brainer to me to figure out how to do this. We do, we could do it as a reserve transfer if need be, albeit I'm not sure that's the best method. We do have the option for purchases under twenty-five thousand to take it out of the capital stabilization fund by a vote of, combined vote of FinCom and Board of Selectmen, which makes a lot of sense to me, but we'll see how it plays out.
Yeah, I mean, worst case scenario, if it isn't this fiscal year, we could always do a warrant and a special within the annual, couldn't we? If we had to pay the fourteen thousand dollars this year for air packs. For the air packs? We could do it.
Yeah, either, yeah, either way. I mean, it could be done as an article at the special, capital stabilization, it's a two-thirds account.
Or a warrant.
The grants for those, I know he wrote grants and he was refused. I was told that all of those Scott air packs were replaced in two thousand and four. And the, you can't apply for, for some reason, there's a, there's a time limit and you can't, he's not eligible to apply for another grant for them at this point.
This is a different grant maybe that he's applying for now, but we'll see how it plays out.
Yeah, I think this is through FEMA, so maybe this is different.
But in any event, yeah, it would be, it would be just, as Mark says, I mean, you could call a joint meeting of both boards and, I mean, the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen and you could vote it that way. Or you could just put an article on special town meeting. Go with that, either way.
Having ninety percent of expensive equipment paid for by a grant, it'd be hard to pass up.
Exactly, exactly, especially when it's for the safety of the firefighters. Okay, from Chief Dillon to the Board of Selectmen, honorable board members, as a component of my personal services contract with the town, we renegotiate my salary for the upcoming year. Request that we commence this negotiation as soon as possible, beginning, as we are beginning the FY seventeen budget process and that will require an agreed, that will require an agreed-upon chief salary for FY seventeen, so.
And we, I requested from the chief more information, which I've shared with you all, and we will put this on executive session for next week on preparing for negotiation.
Perfect. Okay, I don't know if we even really need to talk about this, the cigarette age, I'm not sure where this came from.
We're good with that?
Because it went to the Board of Health is the determining.
Yeah, this is totally Board of Health issue. They had a public hearing maybe a year ago.
Halifax just adopted regulations.
And Board of Health is talking about it, in fact, it's on the agenda for tomorrow night, so.
Actually, it's not going to be, I spoke to them today.
Yeah.
Raising the age limit is not going to be on the agenda. Just the tobacco laws and regulations are.
Okay.
They have already passed in the paperwork and she said, and they did it as eighteen. So if it ever comes up, but if it becomes state, all right, then they would have to change it.
Okay, what did Halifax do?
It's quite comprehensive.
Did they up the rate or up the age?
It's in public places and they up the age and they, I'll get it, I'll mail it to you if you'd like.
Interesting, no, that's, that's interesting.
Actually, I've seen last week's paper, which is in correspondence.
I wish I could get this at home. We, I think we already voted that, didn't we? Does Steven, Terry, we, I mean, we can certainly revote it.
I think we voted.
We authorized the contract, so now we're deciding the appointment.
Maybe we didn't sign it. All right, so let's revote it just to make sure. So motion that Steven Terry appointed police sergeant until January first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, copy of a building permit for Center Street, oh.
We were CC'd on this, I think probably because we okayed going to town council for the zoning enforcement officer to go to town council.
Gotcha. All right, from Frank Bush, sources for elderly residents, rabies inoculations for pets, two thousand and fifteen. This is actually for, looks like for Tara, the town clerk. Hello, Tara, I've been in touch with the Kingston Animal Control Office and I'm advised that a rabies clinic will be held at their Kingston Shelter between the months of May and March, two thousand and fifteen. Is this old? That must be two thousand and sixteen. We can ask him next week.
It's a common mistake this time of year.
Yeah, it could be that it's two thousand and sixteen. Okay, South Shore Race Management, Plimpton. Yeah, I think he, it might just be a typo, but we can pick them up next week, so I'll hold on to that one. Two thousand and sixteen Strawberry Shortcake Road Race. We'd like to hold the twenty-ninth Annual Strawberry Shortcake Ten K Road Race on Saturday, May twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. As in the past, as in the past, the race would begin and end at the Upland Club with our one point two-five mile fun run and ten K walkers beginning at eight-thirty AM and the full field of ten K runners beginning at nine. Police details will be hired and placed according to the recommendations of the Plimpton Police Department. There are no changes from the past year for the race route, maps enclosed. From Ann Winchester from Duxbury.
So is she asking for a vote now?
Yeah, she's looking for permission to do it. And I'll make a motion, providing that all of the appropriate parties sign off on it, you know, police chief and fire and everybody else that's going to be involved so that they're aware of it. So can we forward something around for them to sign? Is that what we do, for them all to sign off on it?
You've taken a vote to approve it pending their, pending their approval and send one to her.
So I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So maybe Bree will let them know that we approved that pending all the other approvals.
Okay, new strict Halifax tobacco regs. Will make age to purchase tobacco products twenty-one as of March fifteenth. All righty. Three thousand Stonewall Inspires Many.
It's not three thousand years old, it's three thousand feet.
There was no link, yeah, like settlements and.
I did the same thing, you know.
Oh, that's nice, that's very pretty. Oh, this is the one on one oh six?
Yeah, yeah.
Very nice.
It really is gorgeous.
It is, it's beautiful, wow, very nice, very nice. Looks like the Plimpton Board of Assessors will conduct its annual inspection of properties with building permits on Saturday, January second. Sorry, that's old at this point. All right, so very nice. I wish I could get this delivered to me at home so I could read it ahead of time. You can, they do deliver it to homes now? I know they used to.
Also, it's, it's, it's on the.
Well, I grab it.
Friday, it's in the Friday Mail every week.
Okay.
You get to see your name in front, sometimes above the fold.
Yeah, and the stupid stuff you say.
Or the stupid stuff you didn't say.
No, nothing stupid if you don't say it. You can't take it back.
Or having your phone number left off.
Oh.
Good move.
Okay, the Fire Destroys Antique Barn, that was a real shame. We had a letter about our, the police department and their support that they provided. And I think that's, is that pretty much it for Plimpton on this one? Yeah, that is, okay. All right, and then last but not least, from National Grid, your safety is our commitment. Just a little fly from them.
So that's for you to sign. I had a couple of things in my mail, not to steal away.
Oh, my thunder? No, go right ahead.
So this is corporate education at Massachusetts Community College. Actually, I'll post that, it's a bunch of good programs, not too expensive either. MIA has workplace conflict, a negotiating workplace conflict seminar in Carver.
Yeah, which is nice.
January thirteenth, which I might actually try to go to, not sure. Tobacco, we already dealt with. The Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Trade Show is a couple of weeks from now. I will be going to that and believe it or not, I love going to that. We do, they have their annual meeting and they need to authorize the chair or one of the other Board of Selectmen to be able to vote at that. So I don't know if either of you are interested in attending?
No, not disinterested, but not able.
So I make a motion that I be the eligible voting member at the MNA Annual Business Meeting.
I'll second, go for it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Vote well and often.
So let me, what's that? Oh, am I going to have to watch the tape?
No, you probably won't hear it.
So I'm going to give this back to Bree to send in.
Yeah, I've never gone, but I've heard good things about it and a lot of good information.
Great meetings, lots of other selectmen, lots of other, since we share so many of the same problems and hearing about creative solutions, invariably, a lot of state governor, government. Last year, the Lieutenant Governor, a couple of others, I think Charlie Baker a couple of years ago, pretty cool thing, so that goes to Bree to go back.
Perfect.
Sorry, a little bit more in correspondence, Small Business Guide resource.
Thank you.
And this was.
Oh, I took the paper, too. I could take that, too, thank you.
We got the Municipal Financial Data Booklet from the Massachusetts Taxpayer Association. Lots of data on every town. You have to be really, really bored and be able to read real small, but this is available. Maybe this should be stored in an available resource place in your office. So there you go.
You might even be able to call them and get a couple more copies and get a copy at the library.
And then, so that does correspondence. I think we're up to minutes and then we've got to remember to sign a whole bunch of papers and photocopy some stuff. So we have the minutes from December twenty-first, which we received this afternoon. Did everybody have a chance to get a look at that?
I have not. Monday's a tough day for me to get them. I'd rather have them Thursday, because I come right from work.
Any chance on that?
Or Tuesday.
And then.
I know, that is pushing it.
Then you have the whole weekend to not worry about it.
Yeah, maybe Thursday, yeah, because that, because I just don't have a chance to get my email and read it before I get here.
Someone down the end asked me that.
All right, so we're going to save these until next week.
Next week, okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Yeah, because I haven't had a chance to read them yet, especially now that it's going to my.
The real email?
The real email, I'm not grabbing it at work.
So we do have the minutes of the Public Safety Building Committee, which two Board of Selectmen were, and I make a motion, this is for December sixteenth meeting, I make a motion that these minutes be approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention, okay. So we're signing warrants, we're going to photocopy the dog saga for The Press and I'm going to photocopy the information that Tara gave us on alternate ways to announce what we're up to on executive sessions.
Okay, so what are we doing with Jeff Randall's request?
I guess.
I mean, do we want to solicit input from people, you know, via email or phone calls and then set up a meeting, too? Like an informational type meeting?
I think we should set up an educational type meeting. I'm not, I'm a little blocked on how to do it.
I mean, I think we're going to hear anyway.
It's possible we could do it at the library, other, similar things have been done at the library.
He said he was going to bring somebody in anyway and that would, if he brought somebody in to make a presentation to you at your meeting, have it televised, so that would be a really good start.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
I just don't think that that very often gives us, you know, any feedback from the public.
Well, I'll say, if anyone, you know, feels, has something they'd like to convey about it, call me, seven eight one five eight five six nine three zero, or email me, Christine, I'm sorry, cjoy@town.plimpton MA.us, if you'd like to let me know what you think about it.
And then she'll share that with all of us.
And I will share it with the board.
Did you want me to call him and schedule a meeting so he can contact that gentleman to get something?
Yeah, you want to do it like the twenty-fifth of January? Yeah, you want to do it like the 25th of January? That would be three weeks from today, because I don't think we're going to meet that third week because of Martin Luther King's birthday.
The 11th, and then you skip to the 25th.
So, yeah, we go to the 11th and then the 25th.
That's good.
Want to shoot for the 25th? Okay. Yeah, let's shoot for the 25th.
Could you add that in the paper?
Yes.
That we'll have an opportunity, I mean, obviously, citizens--
This is a public hearing, or this is within the meeting?
I don't think it's really a public hearing. It's just an informational presentation.
Just an additional informational presentation on this proposal.
Do you think we have enough room here, or should we go to the big room?
Yeah, now this is--
This is plenty big, you think? Perfect. Okay.
You'll have that many people.
Yeah, we can always go to the big room if we need. If needed.
She's given out three samples, and then, of course, you'll have a huge crowd.
No, no samples, because that would be illegal.
Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't resist that.
You put in a correction for my phone number, right?
I don't know why--
Okay. I'm trying to find the link with all this information for you to--
If not, if you wanted to leave it, I will see it, to my computer from there, and then count that for you.
I'll leave you everything, and then we can also leave--
If someone does have it, and with all your--
Yeah. Oh, you know, something I'd like to talk about, if, if you think there would be interest in the possibility of looking at some, like, cluster bylaw to allow senior, like, you know, affordable housing for seniors in, like, a cluster-type development? And I don't know, I'd like to have it on an upcoming agenda, and I think we would need to, I mean, it would require a lot of work, and even to see if there's interest. I mean, there may not be interest with seniors in the town in some type of cluster.
You don't think we got enough going already?
It's down the road, down the road.
I think it's a great idea. I am a little--
I mean, it wouldn't happen this year.
I, I, I think it's a great idea. I wonder if maybe in the summer, when we're bored to death, that might be the time to go after--
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it may not work, there may not be the interest in it, but if there's enough residents that, that think that they would be interested in something like that, then--
We do know there's a crying need for affordable senior housing, and--
Okay.
It does, and by the way, someday, there is CPC money that is earmarked for that and will only be able to be used for affordable housing.
Woo!
It's not a huge amount of money, but it is there, and it even could be used in the investigative stage.
Perfect. Yeah. And these are pretty neat. I pulled a couple off, and they do tend to, you know, there's a lot of conservation land around it, and so it does seem like it would fit with the town if there's a need.
Have you seen the ones that are not strictly senior housing, but they're, but they are, I don't know, low, low income has such a bad connotation, but they're, like, families starting out, so they, it may be a little bungalow and then a duplex, but it's a--
The reason I thought senior only is because there would, there are kids in school.
That's true.
And that's why I would just want to focus on seniors, but, you know, if they're, I mean, I'm sure there's an interest in affordable housing altogether, but, yeah, so maybe down the road.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great one. CPC is very excited about doing that kind of project someday. I mean, not enough to do a whole project, but certainly enough to be helpful.
Awesome.
All right. You have documents to sign. I'm going to photocopy this stuff. I think we can probably adjourn. Anything else from anyone? Again, Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Being glad to be back at work. Good evening, or motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.